Are you ready? Now for the meeting. Yeah, anyone stop a bunch of agents?
No.
Okay, so, um, did everybody get a chance to read the, um, minutes from April 28th and May 5th? Do I have a motion to, um, approve the minutes of April 28th? Make a motion to approve the minutes of April 28th. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then make a motion to approve the minutes of May 5th. Second? Anybody second please?
I'm sorry, do you move?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll stand and Diana stands. Alright, motion carries. Um, so, uh, did everyone get a chance to look at the signatures, the payroll manifest? The first issue tax warrants. Is that timber tax levy the one that got withdrawn?
Yes.
And are we gonna do anything with that Karen? Ed seems to think that, uh, there's some major issues with the person signing it.
Yes, we've sent it back to, um, the logger who stated that he did not sign the form and, um, so we'll get a statement from him and then we will speak with the landowner to find, try to find out who possibly could have signed the logger's name. So we'll get to the bottom of it. Meanwhile, the state, the timber person will come out and, um, assess what's been cut.
Is that what the normal process is, the state, I mean, do they, do they, um, do they come out every time we get one of these timber things and the state comes down and looks at them and they make sure that they're accurate before we sign them?
No, not before you sign them. Um, the first part of it is just they have to fill out the form of their intent to cut. Then after they get done, and this could, it could take them months or year, um, after they're done with the report, with the cut, then they have to file a report. And that's to, usually when the state timber person goes out and checks the cut after it's done.
So he can compare the report against the stumps. He can look at it and make sure that it's accurate. And they do do that?
Yes.
For every single one?
Uh, I think they do.
Cause Ed was saying something about being, uh, be accurate. So I was just curious how that works.
Right.
Who's the police on it?
The state of New Hampshire.
Yeah, okay.
Are the taxes vary from depending on what they're taking out of here, like cordwood?
Depending on the wood.
Subtax or?
Yep.
Well, you have, you, the intent to cut is an estimate. Bagger or the forest or whatever says there's a hundred thousand feet of white pine. That's the estimate. Then once it has been sent to the mill and been measured, there should be accurate, accurate measurements. It may come back ninety thousand more feet or it may come back a hundred and ten thousand feet.
Right, right.
But the question you're asking is, is it all calculated the same? I honestly don't know.
Cause what I meant is, is cordwood different from linear footage or pine?
Absolutely. And the, the state of New Hampshire sends us those values every year, so we put them in the computer. So each one, certainly oak is worth a lot more than pine, maple, so each one has a value. Yes.
Have you been up by that particular cut?
Yeah.
Have you looked at it at all? I mean?
I haven't gone in and looked at it. I mean, I-
Well, you shouldn't have to. It's all right there beside the road.
Yeah.
And my complaint is that on the intent to cut, there's no mention made of, uh, veneer logs or, or, uh, oak logs. Well, there's always a pile of oak logs up there.
Right.
Now, the, the intent to cut said, uh, ten cords of hard maple. There's no hard maple on that log.
Okay.
He's cutting oak tops.
That's why I was asking because-
This, this one is a real fudge job.
Yeah.
And it may even be, it may even be, uh, forgery.
By the owner or the logger?
It could be either one, Lori. I don't trust either one of them.
Okay. And Yost is the logger?
No, Yost is the landowner.
He's the owner.
He's, he's the self-appointed brains of the operation.
And who's the logger?
The logger is Russell Emerson.
Russell Emerson is the logger.
And Russell Emerson is the-
Russell just plain don't know shit from Shinola.
Russell Emerson, um, notified this office that he did not sign that form.
Okay. Got it. Oh boy. Alright, anything else on the action item? Not anymore. So the new business is the lien execution report, um, did everyone have a chance to review that? Everybody good with that? I, I noticed on that, what, that this, I don't know if I can say that. Lot in the same areas, uh, of liens in the same road areas Karen. Is there any craziness-
What are you saying Lori?
On the lien execution report?
Yeah.
I noticed that a lot of the same roads have the same, have, have liens, like a lot of, in certain areas. I'm just kinda curious.
I'm not being, I'm not being cute, but so what?
Oh, I was just curious if there was any issues over there. Is there a reason? Like, are they mad at that area or something? I don't know. I just noticed that. Weird. Uh, monthly fire rescue report. Any questions? Ed, could you give us an update on the VCEP reopening?
Yes, actually, I'd like to, I'd like to discuss it at some length. Lisa wants to open the VCEP up, uh, or open the building up and use the inside for the deposit of, of trash and so forth the first week in June. Um, right now they're, they're already accepting tin cans and plastic and plywood.
Yeah.
It all has to be broken down or, or separated or whatever, of course, the same as it was when you drove through the building. The problem we're having is that the public continues to be ornery. That's the best word I'll use without getting vulgar. Uh, and they have requested, Lisa and, and the staff have requested a police presence over there. Alright?
Really?
Yeah.
That watering?
Yes.
Oh my God.
I'm not washing this jar out. You wanna wash that, you wash it out.
Oh God.
So, we've asked for police presence. Obviously, it would seem that it would be Pittsfield's responsibility to step up to the plate initially. Well, Pittsfield doesn't have enough money to put in the church collection basket. So they won't come unless VCEP pays them. Pays for a detail. Now, the problem with this is we already pay Pittsfield a sum of money every single year for whatever services we may need. So this is like double jeopardy. Okay? We'll work it out one way or the other. But the question I have for the board is will you, would you consider having a, a Bancey police officer over there one day a week?
I think all the towns should take turns.
Exactly.
I agree with that. I don't know everyone else.
Pittsfield have to deputize them?
I can't hear you Diana.
Does Pittsfield have to deputize them though? Cause I don't think they-
No, no.
-still have to another jurisdiction.
Because we own it. Bancey owns that property.
I, I understand that, but it was similar for, at Prospect Mountain. We own Prospect Mountain, but we just can't send a police officer up there to do, um-
Well, is the chief here? Maybe we could ask him.
Thank you. I was gonna suggest-
I don't know.
The question that you ever searched for, that's all.
I don't know- I don't know what, what your, or what-
Yes.
Prospect Mountains' problems are.
No, it's strictly because the school's located in Alton. We're not talking about whatever. It's a building in Alton, not Alton.
No, they, they don't have to be deputized by Pittsfield.
So let's just find out from the chief and, uh, does, I don't know. I think it's only fair since we all, since each town-
Is it really that bad? I mean, is it really that necessary?
Yes.
I mean, I know that people probably do get a little, a little ornery, but I don't, I don't think they're gonna get shot or any, or killed or-
No, but they, they are using defamatory language to, to the people who work there. I'm not, I'm not even gonna say it because I don't want it on tape. But those girls get called names that you can't even imagine.
So Ed-
What can the police do about it though?
Arrest them.
Arrest them for what?
You can't arrest them.
You can arrest them for calling somebody a, whatever.
Can ask them to leave the premises.
Yes, they can do that, but so can they.
So- Ed, is it-
No, cause they was no, they have no authority other than-
Ed, Ed, is it possible that Lisa could put something in writing to all the towns requesting that they take turns and, and put out some and give examples of the issues? So that way the police could respond on how they could handle situations like that, just so they're on the same page and know why we're asking them to do that? I think it would be good if we had something in writing from them before we go ahead and give the okay. To kind of, yeah, but I'm just saying, Ed, I think we should have something in writing with some examples that the police-
It's not the responsibility of Barnstead to be the courier, okay? We have a committee-
No, I'm talking about-
I know what you're saying. Let me, let me tell you.
Oh.
We have a committee that's made up of selectmen from each individual town. They are the ones who have responsibility for what I'm doing here tonight. I'm asking you, would you authorize a Barnstead police officer to be up there for a day?
Right, but all I'm saying is, is it would be nice to have something in writing from BCEP that they're asking all of the, each town to do it? And there is, these are some examples of why, so we have something in writing. That way there's backup as to why we're approving this. If, if the police chief says it's okay, we're gonna ask him right now. But that's just how I would do it. I just think it would make sense to have something in writing and that all the towns receive the same request with examples. And that way we, our police officers could give us-
I will ask Lisa, or I will suggest, I'll suggest it to Lisa that she send out the request to all four communities. The only reason I'm doing this is because I'm a little more aggressive on this subject than some of the other towns are. Pittsfield has five selectmen who have got one thumb where the sun don't shine, the other one up their nose, and two in their ears.
I get it, but I just think if we're gonna buy into it, we, you know, we wanna see if all the other towns are buying into it. There should be some sort of a paper trail that explains what the requests make.
Justifies it.
It justifies.
From each town.
Thank you.
I'll suggest it to her tonight. I'll call her. Uh, or I'll go up there tomorrow and see her. I'll suggest it, and I'll see what comes of it.
All right, thank you, Ed. I appreciate it.
Did you have another meeting?
Uh, no, we've decided not to. Um, that, that's what this is all about. If we have one at all, it'll be a virtual one. Or I'll, or I'll go up there with Lisa. She'll be in the building and I'll be up there with her and the other towns will be in their own offices or homes or whatever.
All right, so, um, chief, if we, uh, we're, we're talking about, uh, BCEP wanting to maybe have each town take turns having a police presence up at the, um, facility and, uh, is there, can you do that as a Barnstead because it's Pittsfield? Or do you need to be deputized to do that?
So, so this is the way it works. We have a mutual agreement with Pittsfield, with Alton. Uh, for example, if we were to stop a car, uh, for a violation that we saw here in Barnstead and went over line in Pittsfield, we have the authority to arrest them, bring them back to, um, the Barnstead. Same thing, uh, with this detail. I, I wouldn't go over there because it's in Pittsfield unless I spoke with the police chief and we had an agreement that we would be going over there. Of course, if there were details, uh, over there, uh, Pittsfield would run those details. They, uh, if they didn't have the bodies to fill those details, then they would reach out, just like any other details, to other area police departments and ask those police departments if they wanna go over there and work with details. And they'd be, they'd be paying overtime rate or detail rate however it's worked out. Just like Prospect Mountain High School. Even though we own part of that high school, uh, I can't go up there and start calling people off, off the property up there. That property is in Alton. We would go up there certainly and back Alton up. They requested us. Uh, but, you know, they have, already they have jurisdiction. We have authority by aid of mutual agreement, but, uh, we just can't set on somebody's toes and do that. Just like, I wouldn't expect Pittsfield or Alton to come into our community, conduct an investigation, make arrests or do something without first notifying us.
So that makes sense. So, so if, if they wanted like certain coverage during, maybe on Saturdays cause it's rough, rough town city on Saturdays, I don't know. So you'd have to go, you'd have to, you and the other towns who've worked with the Pittsfield police department-
Yeah, it's also called a detail.
Right.
The manager's pay.
That's right.
And I think Pittsfield has a union and it not could cause some big issues with their product.
Oh, that's, uh, sure. I don't, I don't, yeah, I can't speak for Pittsfield, but you make a good point. They have a union. And I don't know what the union contracts say as far as, you know, running offices, you know, over there and people on, on duty or in detail. And I think something about the product of Pittsfield.
So the only way we could do this is if it was a paid detail. Is that what you're saying?
Well, that would be, that would be the reasonable thing to, if it was a paid detail. Uh, if we were to do it, send one of our guys over to, um, that community into Pittsfield. Uh, have the, if it wasn't a paid detail, then it would be, you know, an officer, I have to put an officer on duty, which would mean overtime to begin with. I mean, if we were just gonna send somebody over there for twenty minutes, a half hour, I could send a duty officer, but I can't have a police officer, there's only, we're showing up staff. No, I can't have an officer go over there and stay there for an entire three hours when we need coverage.
Oh, no, yeah.
When we need coverage over here. But certainly, I think that a detailed loop would be the way to go, cause I think that's what Pittsfield's gonna ask.
Okay.
Do you have any, you have any ideas or suggestions as to how we could probably prevent some of this from happening? Cause basically they're getting verbally harassed, you know, maybe verbal assault. What are you really, what are you really gonna go over and charge them?
What I, what I would do, what I, what I would do, uh, again, it's, it's verbal stuff. A police presence, maybe a police presence, uh, have an officer sit there in, at the front entrance. You know, uh, have him do his reports. Sit there for a half hour, forty-five minutes. Leave, come back, have his lunch, have him sit there. Just mere presence of the police cruiser there, people who are, it's gonna go out on social media, the cops are at the, at the dump. Be careful or whatever, I think. And, and I have a problem sending my duty officer over there, you know, spending a little bit of time sitting in this cruiser. So he's seen over there.
I really think it's a short-term problem too.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? We haven't heard a lot about it, this in the past. I mean, there've been disgruntled people there, obviously, and you're always gonna run into that, but-
If this, if they were, if this facility was in Barnstead, I think we, we, we have this conversation because we would have an officer there, you know, do what we need to do. But again, it's, it's literally four towns, it's over town, right, so-
One of the other issues that very likely is going to arise has to do with the COVID nineteen. And just like we're sitting six feet apart, they're going to try very hard over there to separate people inside that building, okay? Now, if you've ever been up there, I, I only ever go on Saturdays.
I go three times a week.
Okay, well, people will pack or get in line, sometimes as far away as the gate, get out with a bag of trash and run it all the way into the building. They're not gonna be allowed to do that, okay? Now, I don't think that there's anything that you and I can say or do that's gonna prevent them from trying. But a police officer up there should be able to say, uh-uh, back in your car. We have to maintain-
Well, can't we put up signs like, we have to put up signs, like we're doing the farmer's market and because of COVID nineteen, we have to put up all these signs, have entrances and exits and keep people, you know, we're gonna have to do all this.
There's some traffic, some traffic cones, some signs, what she's saying, with some traffic cones. And it's gonna be a learning for, for the people up there are gonna have to understand.
It's, it's, the, the learning has been going on for several years.
No, I'm saying now with the new, uh, details with the-
The way we're doing business.
Uh, you need to make some, some, some traffic cones and some signs.
They've, they've got the signs up there. They've even painted the, painted crosswalks on the, on the driveway going in there.
Yeah.
Okay, now, you come to a crosswalk in the city, what do you do? If there's a pedestrian, you let them by. At BCEP, uh-uh. They, they have no regard for a crosswalk.
Is there a gate?
None.
Is there a gate? Is there a gate?
Yeah.
Is there a gate? Yeah, there's a gate.
So why don't they put a certain amount of cars and shut the gate, which is gonna stop anyone from being able to walk right in? So you put in three cars-
No, what happens, when they drive up to, into the building-
That's a bit unreasonable, Diane.
Get backed up like seven cars or something, the second cop back or grab the trash or trunk.
Not necessarily reasonable, it's a-
But I think, I, you know, I, I think you could, you could fix that just by having, you know, a code that has to be physically moved by a person for them to move forward. Then if they get out of the car, you go like that, hey, you know, this is an awkward one.
I mean, we're thinking of hiring an extra person just to, um, guide people.
I don't know about having a police officer sit there all day.
I would agree with that. That's a wheel to turn.
Our fans will laugh, well.
Yeah, no. I was just thinking maybe they could come up like at a busy time or something. And I like the idea of coming and just sitting there for a half an hour, maybe on a Saturday morning and doing their report and, and, and things like that. Maybe we could, you know, that, that's a reasonable request.
Well, Pittsfield could leave the cruiser right out their car and then, because I know they used to put it on Route twenty eight, that stop. People slowed down because they didn't realize if there was someone in the car or not. So they could leave the cruiser there. People aren't gonna know if the officer's walking around until they figure out they were in a-
Cause every time-
Yeah, it's all the way out to go to Pittsfield because, uh, even if I send the cruiser over there just to sit there, uh, and, and he has to take action, some action will, somebody commits an offense and, no, we're over there and Pittsfield doesn't know. Or Pittsfield's like, what are you doing arresting people in our community, this is our town? Uh, we have, we have, we had an issue lately, well, Pittsfield had an issue. They arrested somebody, uh, with a blueberry. Uh, you know, that, that sign that's, uh, kind of on, on twenty eight in the middle of, uh, looks like it separates the parking lot half, that, that's not correct. The only part of the blueberry which is in Pittsfield is the, the driveway furthest to the south. A small portion of that driveway. So they can lose them quite a few cases since I've been here because their offices have arrested people in the blueberry. And I've seen a violation, they arrested people. So now, you know, Joe and I have had quite a few conversations and, uh, they're not arresting people anymore in the blueberry. Unless they call us and then we'll take over the arrest because it's a different county. It wouldn't be so bad. But they probably turn it like, I want that dress probably, nevermind.
Well, you guys go to Titans all the time, just swinging the dump on the way.
Do this when you go to Titans.
So Ed, how does that sound? I mean, maybe putting up some signs and, 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 and even Lisa could, you know, write the letter still and send it and just say what's going on. That way the cops are aware of it and, um, you know?
There are as many signs up there now as there are going to be.
Like signs that say, stay in your car until you're up to this point?
They, yes.
What about, Ed, what about, uh, somebody giving them a high time? Giving one of those girls a high time, bad language, harassment? They get the plank from the individual and turn that in to either Pittsfield or Barnstead and they check to find out where they live and maybe they get a warning or they get read the riot act or some kind of something to do with going to BCEP.
That sounds good to me. And now let's ask the chief of police, if you got a, if you got a call or a letter from BCEP, which is in Pittsfield, and told you that your resident with license plate AB one, two, three, four, uh, was verbally abusive to an attendee at a BCEP, what would you do?
Well, we would tell them they need to call Pittsfield Police Department.
See?
They climb a curve.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
So Pittsfield, what you're saying is Pittsfield doesn't wanna go along with something like this or they won't?
Pittsfield is broke. And so they have, even though we can pay them a yearly stipend, even though we pay Pittsfield a yearly stipend, they're going to charge us for police detail.
So here's something. You probably know from where I was from, but Alton had a shooting last week that we thought was in Barnstead initially, right? But, uh, started in Barnstead, the domestic, went rolling into Alton with a shooting occurred and the victim landed in Barnstead. We were very happy to give it all back to Alton.
Ed, can the, can, can't the dump passes be revoked from citizens who are-
Say that again, Diane.
Can, can the dump passes be revoked from citizens that are being abusive towards people that work there?
Yeah, who's gonna watch it? I mean, I, I mean, I look at their stickers or what you can, what you know. Yeah.
I, 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 quite frankly, to me, that sounds like you can't go to church cause you didn't put enough money in the collection plate.
What, you're, you're, see, you're, it's two swords here you're talking about. You're talking about, we need to stop people from abusing the people that work at BCEP, but we can't give any consequences because, so that doesn't make sense. So either there has to be consequence or no consequence.
I absolutely agree.
So consequences, they lose their dump pass and guess what? We're gonna have to figure out another way to get rid of their trash.
Or maybe they get a warrant or-
But do you understand that just to do that?
And then it can be revoked, second, if that-
If, if, if I say, okay, you are no longer entitled to bring your trash to BCEP, then somebody has got to be up there all the time looking for you pulling in. So they could say, uh-uh, Diane, turn it around and get out of there.
So you have three other members that you can figure out how to, if it should be punitive. I mean, I don't know what else to tell you. Putting an officer there and spending all the money unless Pittsfield does it for free doesn't make sense if you're not willing to do punitive measures. What do you expect a police officer to do since there's gonna be no punitive measures anyways? Just tell them, don't do that again, and then the next time they come and the police officer isn't there?
To be honest, and, and not with the intention of ruffling anybody's feathers, this is a problem which should be solved in a board of selectmen's meeting in four towns. It should not involve the police chief. He works for the board of selectmen. And if the board of selectmen say, you need to send a detail up there on any given day, he has to be able to do that, okay? Should all four towns do this? Absolutely, they should. I thought that for a long time. Should Pittsfield be charging us for detail? Hell, no, they shouldn't. We pay them money and get nothing back for it. They don't even plow the lot. We have to plow our own lot up there in the winter time.
So I'm not, I mean-
I will speak to Lisa and I will tell her that she needs to send some kind of a communicate to all four towns and explain to the selectmen what the situation is and the selectmen will then need to take some action. I sit on this board and I am the designated representative on BCEP. I'm, I'm explaining to you what the problem is.
Right.
So you're only one quarter of the authority.
And that bothers me too because I can't, I can't believe that Pittsfield has just taken this stance. I know, I know every one of those selectmen over there. And I will be calling every one of them and I will be complaining to every one of them.
Or you could go to one of their meetings and speak of public input.
Yes, I could, I suppose, but I don't know how they're holding their meetings these days, so. All right, I don't wanna spend any more time on this.
No, I think it's a good idea. Let's stop with Lisa sending a letter to all the towns and, and we'll stop with that. So we have a paper trail start up.
It'd be crazy, I guess, for them.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Okay. Did everyone get a chance to review the Brooklyn Highway Department's schedule? Looks pretty good. Okay. Did everybody get a chance to review the weekly highway department schedules? Looks pretty early. The D O T we surface.
I, uh, I, I have a question. Talk about highway. I saw Christopher's timesheet and I'm wondering if it wouldn't be better that he, uh, one of the days he spends up there should be a Thursday instead of Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay.
Just, I'm thinking that Thursday is the last day that they're working before their weekend. Okay, he should be clearing the phones, clearing the calls on that day. As far as the other two days, I think Monday isn't obvious and whether he works Tuesday or Wednesday, I really don't care.
But I mean, isn't that something that the road agent should decide? Because it says employees is, is the, at the carpet?
All I'm doing is suggesting, what they work out is between them, but it just doesn't make any sense to me that not to cover it on Thursday.
Well, I think it's always important to ask the road agent because it's his department. I don't think we should make decisions without consulting with the road agent or his department. That would be micromanaging. So I think we should, if, if you have that suggestion, maybe, um, is he coming in tonight?
No.
No. Uh, maybe Karen could ask him, express your concerns about it and get some feedback from him. And then you can bring it to the board, uh, you can send an email if he's okay with it, but we shouldn't make decisions without consulting George. That's just my feeling, that feeling that we should not make decisions about any department without consulting the department head. Does everyone agree with that?
No.
I know you don't, but how about everybody else?
I don't, I don't intend, and I never have intended, to micromanage departments or department heads. But sometimes.
Chris is an administrator.
No, he's, he's not an administrator, he's a secretary.
Well, same there. It's a professional word for secretary.
All right, if you feel like that. But the point, the point is that when, in the winter time, when they're working five days instead of four, don't you think it would be wise to answer the calls or clear the phones, all the incoming calls on Friday?
Right, but George was gonna fill him in like, um, for rowing as well, so.
That isn't gonna happen.
I think, I think, you know.
Do a 3:30 right now or 3:10 right now? Chris, okay?
No, 3/8s, 3/8s.
Oh, 3/8s.
He's only doing 24 hours.
You can compare it to.
But the way we, the road agent, the concerns, but in reality, he, he should be the one that, you know, I think once Chris gets comfortable, I mean, it's, we might call, we'll call him a lot sooner, so I think George should find out and get accommodated to the new employee.
Right.
I have no intention of telling George Drew how to run the highway department. However, I look at the time cards and you should too. You should be looking at who worked on what road on what day.
Yeah, I do.
Because I honestly believe sometimes that they, they don't remember from one day to the next. They fill out their time cards on the last day of the week and hopefully they get it right.
Well, I'm pretty sure that George would know which roads they're working on as their supervisor, correct?
Which can broken out of the cruise.
I, I refuse to be that ignorant.
I don't think it's being ignorant, I think it's.
It, it is, it is Diane. Um, George has it in his head that grading roads is his ultimate chore and he's doing a damn good job of it, okay? I don't think he pays much attention to when, if, and how the time cards are filled out. He has submitted a, a schedule, first one so far, um, and there's room for improvement on that. Uh, do you know who Crew One is and who Crew Two is?
Uh-uh.
I don't.
But, but why do we need to know? I mean, that's just.
Why do we need to know?
Yeah, it's just a fact.
Because it needs to be somebody, there needs to be somebody who is culvert certified every time a culvert is installed.
And I would imagine that he would know that and he is making sure of that.
Well, we have to trust that he can do that. And when, if you have these questions, it would be good when he comes in for, when, when the, uh, department heads come in to give us reports. These are the, these are the times when you should be asking these questions and so we can get those answers. I, I mean, that, that would be the way to go there is just talking to them about, talking to George and asking him these questions.
One of the things that I am going to scrutinize to the nth degree is see what his grandson is doing on any given day. Now I noticed that the grandson went with George to AutoServe to get the one-ton truck on the same day, on Saturday, okay? Is that, is that necessarily proper, correct?
Well, he needed another person to get the.
Yes, he did, absolutely, Laurie.
But you do know that he got called to National Guard duty for the rest of the month and that it was asked if he could work on Saturdays to do some fill-in work, um, is that correct?
That's correct and, uh, Nation is called out, Nathan is called out to National Guard for the whole month of May. So instead of incurring overtime by taking another person with him, he utilized Nathan, um, to go up, to pick up the truck, which.
So it saved us overtime to get somebody to go pick up the truck on Saturday. It saved us overtime.
Correct, and, and the question was also if he could utilize Nathan on Saturdays and Sundays, um, to complete or do any other type of work, um, so that he's not incurring overtime costs and he can save his overtime for winter. So it makes sense, um, in this instance.
And you're still getting fixed on on the weekend.
When you hear all the details, yes, it does make sense.
So we can look at those time cards and see what Nathan's doing on Saturdays and Sundays and if we have questions about it, we can ask, right?
Part of the problem is that I've sat here for 22 years or almost 22 years and I have seen road agents do some of, some things that you just shake your head at.
And make the same mistake with selectmen members. I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, obviously, you know, we gotta give him, we gotta give a chance, you know, I mean, just.
Yeah, exactly.
And he seems to be doing a very good job. We finally got, you know, a full team in place except for obviously the National Guard name, but, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's stuff that's gonna need to be fixed and there's stuff that's not, but.
And speaking of, the, the truck at Auto Serve, we did get Auto Serve to cover, well, Christo covered the entire boil and insulation with the exception of the lift-up for the engine, so.
Right.
Still cost us 1,800 bucks.
But it would've cost us 35 or 37 hundred dollars, so they cut the full cost below.
Yeah.
Yeah. I feel very confident in George and his abilities and I, I, I think if you have concerns, you address them when George comes in and talks to us. You know, and I think that's the best time to address them. Cause I really do, I think we have to give him a chance and I, I've seen nothing but good. So I don't know how anyone else feels, but I think everyone, most, Rick seems to think that and I'm sure everybody, anyone else is. My thought, okay, but I really think he's doing the job.
He hasn't even been put to the test yet.
Yeah.
Actually, I think he got hooked to the test the first day.
Well, that's true.
So, you know.
I haven't seen the numbers, but I have questioned and asked how things were going as far as drainage and these culverts, uh, for the paving. And from what I've been told, they, they're hundreds and hundreds of feet ahead of where they were last year with the culvert zone in.
Actually, Ed, did you, did you go up, uh, Nor, uh, Providence Road?
Did I?
Not Providence Road, uh, Peachwood. Did you go up Peachwood?
No.
They put like nine dollars in there.
I know they have, I, I, I did come on, on the, uh.
Remember I'll take a ride up there. What I found was interesting is that, um, some of the culverts, the way they did them, one side of the culvert seems to, it seems to me like it's in a bad spot, you know, like a, like a collective type hole type spot. And where it comes out on the other side, some of them look okay, some of them look like there's no direction for it, you know what I mean? I don't know if that's just by where, they, they just replaced what was existing there, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Or if they, you know, went a different way because it was easier or something, you know, you know what I mean?
I understand exactly what you're saying and I, I would agree with you. I think a lot of culverts.
I don't know a lot of ours, I'm not.
Maybe you could have, I don't know, maybe you guys could take a ride over there.
I, I looked at every one of them and I, so most of them look good, but.
I think what happens is that they are replacing existing culverts. And all that means is that the, the original culvert shouldn't have been put there either.
Right, they, exactly.
You remember the floods we had?
But then you replace it if you have an opportunity to fix it.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't start thinking about how water runs.
Right.
You remember the floods we had a number of years back? Uh, roads like the Evans Mountain Road, um, that one in particular, it washed the road out completely. It exposed culverts that had been in the ground since Christ was in the cradle.
Yeah.
And, and all they did is replace them in place. Didn't mean it was the right place to do it, they just, well, there was a culvert here once, so pull one in again.
Well, it's just one, there was really just one that really, it kind of, it didn't seem right. You know, it's come down on the left side of the road and right before the driveway, it goes across the street. But the culvert ended its right beginning of the driveway, which means as soon as that fills up, it's gonna wipe that driveway right out.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, especially if it gets clogged. If it gets clogged, forget it.
And we have a lot of, well, when you see stuff like that, you can go over to George and ask.
That's why, that's why I was asking, you know.
Yeah.
If anybody else saw it or.
I wouldn't, Rick, if you, and Ed, if you guys see stuff like that and you understand about these things, you can feel free to go talk to George about it because I know nothing about culverts. I wouldn't know. But I do know that we have a lot of issues with driveway, water, driveways being washed out and things not being done right. So you can certainly, if you see stuff like that, ask the guys, ask George about it. You know, you, you can ask George about it. The only thing that we can't do, when we, we can go and talk to all the departments, we just can't make decisions about anything without us making decisions together, but you can certainly ask and, and find out, you know, about what you're concerned about. You can certainly do that and then bring it back. I mean, that's why our job is really. I would say, yeah, I think science is.
I mean, I see it.
Okay, um, uh, yeah, I just want to look, I can find you.
I may have one.
Is that a non, is that, I know it, is.
It, it will be a non-public.
It is.
Okay, I have one more question about the lean execution that I was about to mention.
Okay.
I was looking through that.
Yep.
And there's at least one, I wasn't able to find another one, that says, uh, tax lien, unknown owner.
Yes, that's probably.
Why don't, why don't we own, know who owns that?
Because there is a small.
Lot on Can Road, I think.
It's a small piece of land that, um, whoever was the owner wrote to us. Are you sure it's not on Brindle Pond?
It said Can Road, C A M N.
Um, anyway, they said this is not my property, um, so we have to continue to.
Investigate.
To send a tax bill even though it's unknown owner.
Who you sending it to?
It, we, just by law, be, you, they can say it's an unknown owner, it's not theirs, before the town can take it, and the town doesn't wanna take it, we'd have to send a tax bill for three years in a row and we have to send it to unknown owner. Now, if the town of Barnstead wants to pay somebody to research this and find out exactly who owns the property, that's.
Well, all you have to do is go back to your last registered owner.
No, it's.
They had to have been a transfer from that, they had to have been some kind of trade off.
Something like that.
Well, they can and you can look it up. I mean, a lot of times, well, this varies, doesn't normally happen, but, um, there was one ca, one place, I thought it was Brindle Pond, where they had it surveyed and the survey says, this isn't your land. So then they say to the town of Barnstead, this isn't my land, I'm not paying this anymore and I am not the owner. So now.
Could've passed away or something, but it could be wrapped.
Nope, I mean, it just depends. Most of the deeds, if you look at the deeds, they're like 10 acres more or less, you know? And unless someone has it surveyed and then they can find out that this isn't even part of my land, so I'm not gonna pay for it anymore.
Yeah, put money up there.
But it was, it was registered owner of this property, correct, at one point?
At one point.
We have the last registered owner of the land, right?
There'll probably, um, Mr. Hutchinson, who came to the town several years ago and said, proved that this was not his piece of land and he didn't wanna pay for it anymore. So, no, 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 no. Hutchinson.
So if that's the case, I mean, can't we do a title search?
Unknown owner, Can Road, yeah. I mean, we can look at the deed and, and we can see why they say they're not the owner of this land. So if they don't wanna pay the taxes on this land, then it's just gonna sit there for three years. We still have to send out a tax bill for three years in a row.
That's what you're getting at, you're sending a tax bill too.
It, we have to send it out by law to unknown owner with no address and then it comes back because it's undeliverable. But for the state of New Hampshire, for the law to say.
That's where you lost me.
That you sent, for, for the law, we have to prove to the law, to the state, that we sent out a tax bill. This is exactly how you send it. It comes back, it just shows that we sent a notice out. That's what we have to have so that we can then take over the property and of course, it's only a one-acre piece, um, then.
And they were noticed.
Then a notice went out to what we had for information at the time. Again, do you wanna spend?
No.
A bunch of le, money legally or the office to try to find out who actually owns that piece of property?
It just doesn't make sense.
Is there anything on the property, you know?
Is what?
Is there anything on the property, the building?
I would say not. It's a one-acre piece, there's no improvements on it, so it's just, um, a one-acre piece of, uh, land only. So, yeah. I mean, I can.
How many years has this been going on?
Well, I'll get you more information on this particular piece. I don't have it in front of me right now, but.
We can, we can look it up.
But you can't remember that, Karen?
Jeez, come on.
I just thought.
You're pretty good. I'm not, I'm not.
You're usually right, you know?
And actually, I, I, uh, didn't even realize that it was on this lean, unknown owner, but we'll find out.
Okay, how about the D O T we surfaced? Is everybody good with the informational items so we can move on to our next appointment? Everybody's good? Oh, yeah. Oh, boy. My poor mother, I don't know. Okay, so we have a non-public with, are we sure it's a non-public?
Yes. Now, you can ask her if there's anything else she has to discuss that's public, um, but if it's about.
I remember.
Hiring, it, you know, then it would be non-public.
Are we all on the same, okay. Yep. So, um, okay, so, um, how about we go?
I'm not allowed to leave.
Probably, it's not probably because of a bunch of committee reports and stuff.
Yes, and anything I have, if we could get that out of the way.
Okay, uh, committee reports, Gary, did you get to meet with the chief?
I talked with him, yes. We both had a tough schedule, but we discussed everything I could come on. I don't know if you know social media or not, but people are heavy on this, it was in the newspaper.
Yeah.
Uh, about littering and, and it's, and it's not just littering, I had to explain to somebody. And it's not just littering, it's, I hate to explain to somebody. It's illegal dumping. It's really, and hitting us hard. People seem, they're jumping out of their skin over it. I don't blame them. And, uh, so what I'd like to do with the board's permission is possibly, we've got a couple of people that have stepped up and they volunteer. They'd like to help out, maybe get on a committee. Uh, we're going to talk to the chief about tarages in specific areas that we know about right now and that are, seem to be continuously hit and dumped on and, and ease of re-healing up on anywhere you can with increased patrols in those tarred areas we come up with, uh, with enforcement. What I also, I'd like to do is get some kind of posting out on all of the town websites, like Bryanston Town website and like, uh, on the community website and on the police website. It's one general statement saying that we're going to attack this, you know, we're going to go after this, we're going to go on the offense in hopes of curbing it. And I know the fine for littering is $2.15. Can't do more than that. That's a, that the state has to say over that. But there are other things that we've done.
We follow, we have our own ordinance, don't we?
No, I think the town does that great.
Right, there's a limit as to how much.
Yeah.
How much the fine will be.
But that's not counting, uh, other things that could be done. You know, they can make them pick up trash. And I believe it's a bigger fine or a bigger penalty as far as illegal dumping. I think that's a little more than just littering. So just some kind of a general statement I'd like to come up with, with whoever works with me and we put it out everywhere to try to get this word out. Now, we might never catch anybody. Hopefully we do. But at least if we try to curb someone, they know that we're not just sitting back admitting this all out. And we're going to at least make some kind of, you know, we're going to try to stop it and curb it.
Because I don't have any trail cams that might want to.
Well, that's another thing that minimal works with, with the chief.
But you know, even signs have to say.
Yeah, some, some signs tell, some say maybe various.
Videos available to users.
Right, that's exactly.
They're going to deter people from doing it.
Exactly.
And signs aren't that expensive. I mean, I paid, we're talking about. I paid, like, I think I paid $44 for four.
Right.
Standard metal outdoor signs for the culvert.
Right.
That say, slow down children at play.
Yeah, I'm looking in, you know, some signs too. And I'm sure they'll get ignored by most people, but you never know. One person sees that fine note and then they read the town site or something that we're going to start enforcing this and we're going to have increased patrols and, uh, want to target the community in as far as their eyes. They see something, say something, like they, because people are pretty hot about this right now.
I know.
And this is our chance to try to do something about it.
So why don't you put together what you want to put out there and just send it to Karen? Have Karen send it to all of us, make sure we're all on the same page.
Right, that's, that's the other thing I want. I don't want a lot, a lot of information going out, a lot, you know, different information. We've got to, it's got to be one thing and you go from there. Once we all agree to it.
Yep.
Try to go from there and keep bringing it up on this, so.
So we're going to just send it to Karen, have her phone it. We are on, we'll give the A okay and you go forward with that. That way we all can answer the same questions and we all run the same page.
Right, and the chief will be willing to work and his guys will. Has them, you know, go look at some areas that they've noticed and, but, uh, and I've got, like I said, I've got a few people that want to do something, just out there. Want to try to curb it. So I'd like to get together with them and see what we come up with. Two weeks, I think. Uh, talk to you guys before then or by then and let you know where we're at. Give it a shot anyways.
Love it. That's great, thanks, Eric. Thank you.
Get on here.
Yeah. Yeah, Gary.
That's something, I saw a response to that, but I think it was Joanne Beck, actually.
She's pretty hot.
Nice, nice people.
She's pretty uncut about it.
All right, um, do we have any, um, public announcements?
I have one.
Okay.
Um, just to note, I know you did think that there could be public input. However, with live streaming, uh, the public can put, enter comments into the live stream. I think there's a place down there where they can actually write down questions. And Andrew will funnel it over to Karen, um, to let us know if there is any public inputs. If anyone's commenting on anything, maybe you probably would have opened it in.
Okay.
But yes, they are able to comment if they're watching and, and live streaming.
And now, we're, we're live streaming on the town website. So is there any viewers? Hey, two is better than nothing.
Maybe one can afterwards anyway.
The, the chief and deputy are here.
Okay.
So in the future, if you want to be part, if you're watching us later, you can comment while we're live streaming.
So we, or we can open up public input still, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And they would be able to, um.
Okay. So as of, our next meeting, we'll open up public input again. Uh, and then if people have questions, they can, and Andrew, you'll let us know, right? Okay. Okay, so, um, you want to call, uh, do we want to just call her in and see if she has any public or do the public after? Just go into non-public now?
I believe it's non-public, but you also have your chief and your deputy out there waiting as well. So we probably should at least let them in the lobby. Um, we'll grab Mary first. She's the first one on the agenda, so.
Okay, chief public.
The, the fire chief and deputy chief, I believe, will be non-public. They may have some public announcements, but part of that will be non-public.
Yeah, they're going to stay out there, right?
Um, it depends where you want to do your non-public. You can go back to your office unless you don't feel comfortable, um, either that. If you want to do non-public here, they will have to stay out there. Andrew will leave and we'll just shut the doors in between. So it's up to you.
Let's say.
Yeah, they'll get easier.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Should we let them in the lobby?
And can we let them in and just ask them to wait in the lobby?
Do you want me to let them in there?
We have, if I went to non-public first, yes.
Is it on mute?
On.
Yep.
So, last time we went out.
Period?
Yes.
Alright, you guys can...
Nice meeting you guys.
You're welcome.
Good to meet you.
Great to meet you.
Great to meet you.
Good.
There you go now. Thank you. That was good job, that's your tip.
You're gonna make a coffee or something.
Yeah, right. This is like gonna say maybe a sandwich. Sorry, burn. All right, so you guys, how are you guys doing? Do you want to give us an update on how things are going?
We are, we're doing very well, thank you. I'll let Al speak, he does a lot of the day-to-day stuff and all his progress. Obviously, based on the circumstances, the pandemic has been unbelievable, unbelievable. We're discussing some body responsibilities. I mean, it's like thirty to fifteen emails a day and returning messages and forwarding information seven days a week. It's crazy, the bomb stuff that's going through our hands. The, it's kind of difficult, it's time-consuming to do everything remotely. Obviously, our means, we've come right to a speech at home here, so that makes it very difficult making progress. The good thing about it is, I'm not a fool. Tax dollars aren't going to come in this year, so we are not going to do a lot of what we normally would do. It's about spending and whatnot. All our discretionary spending is pretty much a ran to a speech at home. And we're doing just what we absolutely have to. And I'm no fool, I know everything we can do to save an hour budget is going to have to go somewhere this year for this community, there's nothing else. So, with a lot of what we would normally do, projects that we would normally be working on, we're just not. Staff's done a great job on the day-to-day operation. We've had, I know you're aware, we've had a couple of minor glitches of potential exposures, but they've protected themselves very well. Animals protected themselves very well. We've had the opportunity to have a crippling exposure on several cages here that have not, not been home. So, we feel very fortunate for that. We do have, I wrote at some point, the doctor can about some expenditures, very fourteen by next week. Some safety work that we need to upgrade. One of the simple things is the mask that we use every day, and all of my shoes are a great thing, until you wear these. They try to drive an ambulance. They follow bad.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So, I'm gonna be looking to be buying.
No heavy breathing.
Ten to twelve super well-fitted respirators with filter kits that will allow us to work. As one of the things that I've witnessed is, we wouldn't go to work and patient is severely having some severe breathing difficulties. There's a lot of things that happen at a very quick time, and the first thing that happens is this. And I can't have paramedic like this, put a mask on, this is not a type of stuff. We know that, you know, we'll make some improvements there. The other thing that I'll be talking about here shortly is, just to finish up the COVID, is clean. How do people want cleaning? Everyone's doing things a bit different. If we had moved forward with an ambulance remount, like we talked about, there would have been an ultraviolet light system in that ambulance installed when it was remounted. I'm still looking at those systems. Some of the things that have delayed those, that decision-making progress is, how does it work on COVID-19?
We know how it works on diverticulosis.
Exactly. So, we can assume that the ultraviolet lights are going to be very successful and also following changes. That you would just set it in the back of the ambulance and leave it for prescribed amount of time for square footage. It might be forty-five minutes, maybe two hours, you can also put this room on Sunday, or the office, and things like that. So, there's two different processes, and they, quite typically, they run upwards of the misting system, that's twenty-eight hundred dollars. It's not cheap. The bad thing is, the fluid that the hospitals and everybody has to use is anywhere from fifty-nine hundred to five hundred a gallon. So, there's a, there's a means and a future. The ultraviolet lights are almost like a thousand dollars, but there's no expenses to what goes on. And neither one of those are a fix-all, they're just another tool in that process of.
But if you have savings in other projects.
I do, I will definitely be able to fit all of this out of my budget. I am, I'm understanding that all I can save out of my budget is going to go to a common good. Yeah, let's, we just don't know, so.
Would that parent, would that qualify under the state?
Yes, any of those expenses he just talked about will qualify.
Yeah, so we could right there get that.
Right, yes, because you could apply for that grant, you have to have a minimum of three thousand.
No, we'll have to.
Yep.
So, that's to get that.
I mean, the rest.
Do you have all the grant information and the state on top of that?
I do. I haven't, I haven't begun the process of fitting the numbers in because I'm still in the situation. I know a lot of people that use some of these processes, and I'm still looking at, how's it working for you? What are you finding? How, no, and it's not just, we have it, are we going to continue to use it? Is it going to continue to be developed in the community? As you know, I'm real tight about stuff like that. So, once we answer those questions of what the best pursuit is going to be, and then what the best purchase is going to be, you'll get something. And it won't be terribly long. In the meantime, we're not unprotected, we're manually disinfecting everything, but bottom line is, that takes hours to do. Operationally, I think we're doing very well. The other thing that is going to be, like I said, simple things like burn department, some things like that are more complicated. You know, you can't have people just come in and scribble on a piece of paper. It's done remotely now, so that takes a little bit more time to educate people, it's kind of exposed a little bit. And some other processes, so. I do have a lot of information for the stimulus funds and all that, gone a little bit over of what's going to happen there. Our roster is pretty slim when it comes to people who are qualifying. And the simple thing, and the chief man was just talking about it a little bit, is, you know, how often, like myself, I might be ready at the station, and I'm not going to call a car. It's an exposure that we don't need. So, I might be right there, so I'm not going to qualify for the stimulus money, and that's okay, I'm fine with that. But those few people that do get used on calls during the week will be going in. And there's only, there's only about five or six actually, a couple members that would be taking calls besides the full-time staff. So, you know, seven, some others.
Are you getting a lot of calls? I mean, is it busy that way?
Well, if you were to talk to me three weeks ago, four, three weeks ago, I would say calls had dropped right off the mouth of the neighborhood. Late October, that early first few weeks ago, I called one, it was down. And when I say that, it was the med cops, the, what we call the frequent flyers, you know, I don't feel good, I haven't felt good for a couple of days, dropped it off to nothing. That tells me two things, and I don't mean to be blunt, but you either didn't go to hospital, or you found out, just because you're running the neighborhood, it's in the fast drive. You're gonna sit in the pocket, walk for three hours, go get this out, and then I've been taking the door anyway. So, people start making those calls, okay? And I said, brought the car, I was down. For a number of weeks, and it was like, we have to wait for the wheel. And then Thursday rolls around, we do ninety calls, Friday we do five, Saturday two is three, Sunday we do eleven. It's like, it's.
It kicked up again?
It's like.
It's because they advertised that nobody was going to the doctors, so they said, oh, now.
It's a dumb call, so we might as well go calling it.
Yeah.
So, we get those spikes, I called one, and I was back just about annually where it should be.
Where it should be.
Do I think we're going to be down? Yes, and the only thing I can judge that by is Torzyn. Torzyn was not going to be down. Now, if somebody has a second hole on the leg, and their paid taxes on that company, I don't think anyone's going to accept the fact that they're going to spend all some of their company. They are going to use that property, and they're getting, there may be some services ready, but bottom line is, we're not going to have the last group of influx of people and having that car turned down. Right now, it's just about where it should be, and I was quite surprised when they picked that down. Reporting takes, it's taking us a lot of time. We're doing weekly masks, gowns, gloves and all that stuff, we're doing report of what we have in stock, we're not very ready to leave, and I put it in order. We're not buying that stuff, I know states are buying, we're not on stimulus, so that's really good news. And the chief man is actually responsible for delivering some of that in our states. It's a little front, but, so, and I'm being reasonable. We have a lot of people putting in for hundreds of thousands of products, when I put in a facial logo, I ask for twenty. I'm a realist, if I need twenty, if I need more than two or three weeks or something, I can get some more. Bottom line is, we're pretty healthy. If the police department needing some help, the hiring department needing some product, I've got enough so I can share. Can I do a school district meeting, five hundred, not, not even close. So, no, I can't, but bottom line is, the N95 mask, I have about two hundred and seventy in stock. Surgical mask, I have about a hundred and fifty in stock. Fifty face shields, fifty-five suction goggles, seventy-eight fold gowns, and four thousand nine hundred and fifty in stock. The reason for that, it sounds like a lot, but there's small convenient and large.
Those are night travel?
Yeah, in every vehicle, every building, so, you know, there's, and that's not uncommon. So, but, so when I ask you something, I'll ask for twenty or thirty, the N95 mask, I have asked for two hundred, because I think we're gonna probably need to show those up and anything like that. But, so if anyone has any needs, let me know, but I try to be reasonable, but, you know, they're still going to be there a few weeks. I don't think I have a regular box of this stuff right now, so, we're taking care of that as best we can. Budget, we're looking at it all the time, we have some places where we're pushing up our limits a little bit. Disposable equipment is up a little bit because of some things that we have to purchase for medical supplies are going up. And the, we used to shop, and we still do, we shop for price. Now, you buy it from what's got it right now. So, when you need something, and the state's not offering that, we have to get it. You know, and some of the needles and things like that that we use on some of the paramedics, they're pretty pricey.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be the roof right now.
Yeah.
Alcohol? What do you mean alcohol?
Yeah. Not that.
Yeah, I went online today to buy the stuff for the farmers market, and not only is it expensive, you can't, I can't even get it until late July. So, I'm like, oh my God, what am I going to do? I ordered two things, a hand sanitizer, and I couldn't get wipes.
Right.
And everything was just crazy expensive. I don't know what we're going to do. We need gloves too, so I might be going with that.
Well, I can share some with you, just let me know. You know, and that's pretty much what we're all, and I've accommodated for that in small amounts, and I can ramp up to help those issues. The, as you know, we proved the purchase of a stand chair to keep an ambulance in service. And they've reallocated all of the people to, from the department that puts those products together to other areas of that company. And now they're pushing that delivery gate back. I have been lucky enough to find an old one that still fits the standard, that we can borrow and use. The ambulance is in service, and that's, that's good news, so we bought some time there. You know, simple things like that that come up is like, how do you get the three-week delivery down, turns into twelve weeks, fifteen weeks? There's nothing we can do about things like that. We do all we can on purchasing, trying to make it work faster, go for time accomplished. The headaches around warranty paint job when I'm doing ambulance. Everybody, and I was saying industry-wise, everybody's had some paint problems. And you can relate it to, because I know the industry, the government has taken a lot of involved, technicals out of painting. When they did that, they found out that when they build ambulances and cars and trucks and anything else, the process they used to prep the vehicles in the finished product may not have been compatible enough. So, the ambulance company's got some problems with some bubbling paint, under warranty. I chose not to do the paint job in my shop, just because I didn't want to deal with it right now. So, it went back to Connecticut. I now down the warranty paint jobs for ambulance, in fact, I do them all the time, but I was just too busy to fit that one in. I can typically do them quicker. When it goes to Connecticut, it's six weeks, maybe seven, but, but they said, okay, we'll let you borrow an ambulance. So, they let's borrow an ambulance. The process is, and I'm explaining this to Karen, they don't want to hold it in case something goes wrong. So, they're going to deed it over to us, or no, I'm, we're going to buy it and ensure I can use it in case we need it. If something goes wrong, we're responsible, have something to get into. The title has been very, very good for.
Say that again, you're gonna.
They gave us an ambulance to use, and we're done with it, we're going to give it back. This is the dealer that we buy the ambulances from.
Because we're, because our ambulance is for a paint job.
Is in Connecticut, and we painted it, under warranty.
And what's the deed for a dollar?
Okay, the loaner ambulance.
Yeah.
The dealer doesn't want to have to be responsible if we get in a catastrophic accident, he won't, he doesn't want to get sued. So, he says, I'm going to give you the ambulance for a dollar, you're going to buy it, and when you're done with it, at the end of the six weeks, you're going to give it back to me in the bottom of the lot.
Ensure it, we have to ensure it.
We insure it, that's why. We insure it, and we're going home. As of today, he's had to back off that decision because the state of Maine isn't doing titers at all, zero. So, he has given us a temporary plate, it's coming tomorrow. So, he's going to retain your ownership of it, and he's going to put his temporary plate on. It's not only good for the twenty days, state of Maine says it's good until fall, because when I go to license plate, it's either. So, it's all, we'll be all registered tomorrow, and we all ready to go, and then we'll be fine, we won't be worried about title anymore. Because, I mean, he has a name to give it through the state of Maine. So, we have that, you know, if we can, if we're not going to go on that pick, unless something happens to one, we have to. We have a catastrophic, a chemical failure, an accident or something, and we'll have something to use. But that's just a crucial ingredient, if we need to something, so, that's pure. Other than that, I'll let Al fill in the blanks. He's got a bunch of code enforcement. I got some commercial buildings that have come up, and they need complete, because of changing market, they need a complete code review. And typically, we would ask the state tire officer office to help, and they would give us the advice of a look-in or a show. They're not doing that right now, they're not doing any field work for inspections. At some point, if this, if I can't resolve commercial code enforcement for some of these bigger projects, I do have a retired fire marshal available that we could hire. And I will talk to him about availability, and what he charges per hour or whatever, if we had to get somebody to help us with some commercial code enforcement. Something we don't normally do is a complete code review is pretty technical. You typically got involved in that, so. But I knew of somebody available that has come forward and said, he does it at pot time, because he's retired, he's a fire marshal.
Is he from March then?
No, but of course by, so. And so, we do have an opportunity. By the country store and the restaurant in Watson, the two of them are pretty complicated when you start changing occupancy like that. They want, they want to do a complete occupancy change, which is, or a good technical, it's a lot, but they are. Volumes and volumes of research, so.
I think it just sounded fifty, for restaurant for fifty.
At the country store, yeah, and, and.
It's still gonna help the store, I think.
Yeah, um, it gets, it's pretty, no, and I, I start, I've looked in a lot of these and I guess, I mean, it goes all the way up to, um, develop the parking, build its eyes, obviously, um, you know, when you go to a complete change of, for code review, it's pretty technical and I don't wanna be, you know, I wanna keep, keep it, bring as much business as known as we can, but we have to do it legally, make sure it's not proper.
Do you have like a per diem rate?
Yes, he, he would. I had a conversation about what he got, what he charged. He made me offer him, and I said, let me keep it in my back pocket and see what, what happens. This was several months ago. He came forward and, um, I just seen that I got two commercial projects that are gonna take us some time.
Is it because that other guy can't do that?
Derek?
Yeah.
He's never been a commercial and, and my real problem is, once we get into these, um, obviously the planning board has a time constraint. And we don't have time to educate ourselves, so if.
So you need a specific commercial.
If there was, yeah, if there was, if there was a question on, 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 uh, a building that was gonna be a complete, um, occupancy change, like the, the restaurant. Um, and we had some specific questions, typically I can feed that to the state firehouse's office and then probably come out in three or four days, look it over with us and say, well, listen, you know, this is what we found and deliver this thirty volumes of information and that, that building is gonna be popping in all. Um, and it would take us for hours to properly research that and probably miss something and be, be wrong. I just don't want, I wanna be fair. I wanna make sure that we can keep them, they can continue on and it's done right, so, um, you may get in for me about that in the future. We'll see how that goes. You have a bunch of things?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So basically I run the day-to-day operations, um, when Sean's not around. Uh, some of the things like starting in December more or less, I kind of felt, kind of the feeling that the department's looking for, the guys are looking for and everything. And some of the accomplishments that we've made since January first. If there's any type of bill of spelling errors, I'm psyched, so. I really do. You know, okay, so every member, some of the concerns, I listened to all the members, I sat down with all the full timers and some of the call people. And I sat down, I wanted to hear their grief, what they liked about the product, what they didn't like about the product. And, and their ideas of what would make this product a better product. So, um, one of them was email. So I met with Karen and within two, three weeks, everybody had an email, a town email. So now it was shocking. The chief sent something out, Rice sent something out and it goes to everybody. It's their responsibility to open up their email and be responsible for their email. So it's a written document that if I send out to everybody, they have that document and if they say, I know about that. That it's your responsibility to open the email and read it.
Perfect.
So, um, my second point is basically, I listened to all of the firefighters. I listened to people, sat down with them, uh, one at a time, not as a group. And they all had something bitchy about, they all had something good to say. So I kind of wrote down a bunch of remarks and then I said to them all, I said, okay, everyone is a valuable resource. Tell me what you can bring for the department. And everyone does. So he wanted, from the guy that just hired Troy Norman to Timmy Robbins, Robbins or even Dan. Everybody brings something to the table. So I tried to figure out what each guy specialized in. And in that process, I tried to, you know, I'm gonna, I love delegating. I love delegating and I just, and let them run with it. And if they need questions, they can ask the chief or I anytime, but if not, let the guy go with it. And if he specializes in that type of category or that function, let him handle it. And if he needs our advice, we ask, if not, he's in charge. So, um, a couple of things we did in the firehouse, you know who all the guys know, we're never the same firehouse. In this town, not where I'm, just to be honest. Okay, it's basically a garage, you park fire trucks in and then you have the living board. So I told these guys, and I'm very honest, but I'm honest with you guys, okay? We're not gonna spend millions of dollars on a new firehouse at this time. We're probably gonna put the addition on to the town hall eventually and some other improvements. So I said, if you guys, you know, you guys are good about the firehouse, but why not make it your firehouse? Have some pride. Okay, so let's do something different. Let's change the color of the walls. Let's change the atmosphere. It can be a new firehouse. Let's just make it our own. So we explored the, uh, appropriate prisoners. Now the prisoners come in, they do some painting for us. That lasted, I think, one weekend?
Yes.
One time.
Yeah.
Right, and I think the chief, the chief had to walk and pick them up, right?
No, I said, Derek did.
Derek, okay, yeah.
I was scared to do it the second day and it was like, no, no problem. I was like, okay.
And that cost us a little money. It basically cost us painting supplies. We had some painting supplies left over from other projects of the guys that done the lockers and everything. And we went out and spent small money on some painting supplies. And then it took, I asked the guys, I said, you know, we can't do this job and finish. So some of the guys agreed, yeah, I'll paint, and some of the guys said, it's not my, my job description. I understand it. And it's true. It's, it's really honestly true. And you can't, you can't force somebody to paint. So I said, that depends on how much pride you want in your firehouse. And basically, everybody shifted. Some shifted more than others, some shifted more early, some shifted, I don't know. So basically we went for like a tan color with green trim, almost like this color here. We painted all the windowsills and all the trim in the baseball bright white. So now it was clean. The walls are light gray color.
Right.
Okay, then we stripped the floor right down to the original floor. We took all the, all the wax off. I mean, some places the wax is almost six inches of it didn't stay. And we're still in the process of finishing the kitchen. We should be done the end of this week, but that was a huge, huge accomplishment. We also, there was an old stairwell and I'm like, I couldn't understand why they had a door for me. It was only about five feet high. And it was an old stairwell and inside there's nothing but a couple, a bunch of backboards and a buffer. And I said, why don't we tear this little wall down and utilize it and make the office that much bigger and friendlier and more professional? So Dean Conger and I got together one day, within three hours, we had the wall taken down and extended the office over. And then we, we actually, uh, put the ceilings, stood the ceiling over and finished it all in one day.
My God.
So now.
This is fabulous.
It does look good.
So it looks like an office. Now you walk in, it looks like a professional office. We took all the stuff off the wall. Now, I'm not trying to take away from the department's history or heritage and everything, but a lot of the stuff is the old plaque. We won the award, we went to the, uh, home day nineteen ninety-one. It's all over the walls. I said, we're gonna take everything off the walls, we'll put all that stuff upstairs if you guys wanna save it, it's fine with me. We just wanna have nice clean walls. So when you come in, you're in a professional atmosphere. So basically we rearranged that so it's more friendly. So we have noticed a lot. So when you're addressing us in your pocket, the officer or somebody, you're actually looking at the people you're addressing.
Wow.
So that's what we did. And we put all the corners in one area. We had traffic, people come in from Austin. Rearrange our radios, rewire some of them, maybe, maybe not work better, but.
All they work out.
They work better, right. And all our little corners are open together, our printers, our fax machine, everything's all in one area.
Wow.
So that's what we did.
That's awesome. Would you guys do it all in deep rolling pictures?
Yeah. Um, and one of the basics, we stripped the wax floor, which doesn't seem like much, but when the edge of the floor had ever really been done, the correct way, right down to the tile, it's a lot of work, you know? And it was doing calls and doing apparatus equipment checks and everything else going on, these guys really bust their luck, okay? Also, we provided additional coverage for the day by me coming in and working, I've been working for forty years a week now. It's additional coverage helping out, uh, the ambulance. I actually had to drive for the first time in my thirty-seven year career, driving ambulance to the hospital with a chewy bit. I had never driven the ambulance when I was scared shitless. I'll tell you why. I haven't driven to the Honda hospital before. Don't get lost.
It was in the picture.
I missed some of those big signs I had the age. We're also going into the review process. We're reviewing all the policies. When chief takes over here, he did have a policy book and it was very well written and it was excellent done. It was excellent done. It was perfect. So we're just trying to review the policies, making sure they're still up to date and if there's any change, that should be done. So we're going for that. It's gonna take time. It's not gonna happen overnight. It's gonna take some time. Um, we're also following through. Uh, we had an office meeting, the chief and I and all the officers and the firefighters who were invited in. And we delegated more assignments to certain people. Even the two new guys who only have six months or five months of the job, we're giving assignments, like hose testing and ladder testing and things like that. So they have, they have a sense of responsibility to the department, basically, and they feel like they're part of the department. So when they're responsible for certain things and we've been basically checking on, make sure they're following through on that. And like Captain Carroll had too many assignments, so he kinda redirected some of them, so, um. And then we're continually monitoring the current status of COVID nineteen and the operational changes. Timmy Robbins is basically our infectious control officer and he basically takes care of all the updates and everything. And he puts them, we have actually made out a, a three ring binder for my desk and any updates are in there. So if you're responsible for it, you kinda read them or if you get them on email, you can read through emails and we'll be up to date on the current procedures. Some of the future goals, uh, future goals are attainable goals within a year, in the last maybe two years, depending on money or anything else. We're gonna go through and all, there, there are evaluation forms for the firefighters and the officers. We're gonna actually do one they haven't done in a year or two.
Year and a half.
A year and a half. So we're gonna do that coming this summer. Um, one of the big concerns and was, they were supposed to have been a bathroom upstairs years ago. And we know we're a tight budget right now. I understand that. And what we're trying to do is, and that was one of the big concerns for the guys. So I said, now how can we do this and do as much as we can? So we kinda laid out an area. We actually had a staff come over and approve what we, what we were thinking about doing. And the only thing we did say was you have to have a licensed plumber and the licensed, uh, let's go guy come in and do the wiring. He said, no problem. Uh, Dan Conger, already called and gave a brand new safety act, a brand new personal safety. All we have to really look for is like a tub shower, more, more, a shower unit, like a five foot shower by what, thirty-six inches tops. I don't think there would be anybody picking any tums, so. So, and another bathroom, I'll be honest with you, I'm not trying to be frugal. There's nothing worse than one of the guys walking back and you're trying to grab it. Okay, I'm telling you.
The bottom line is, the firehouse is in the middle of a public room.
In the middle of a kitchen.
Yeah, so you need to get back.
Right, and these guys, we're all getting older, so.
And then you have to come down into a public area, you know, so.
So the guys volunteered to do as much work as possible. I even called Home Depot and see if we could like maybe a shower unit donated to us or a shower unit that somebody brought back that had a crack or a scratch, lungs that's leaked. Something, you know, if it's up high or something, it doesn't matter. So that's what we're investigating. A regular shower unit is six, seven hundred dollars. If we can pick one for a couple hundred dollars, why not do it? You know, and a toilet is a hundred, a hundred, twenty-five dollars at most and a shower bath, those are the basics. The rest of it, the study and everything else, we utilize when we took the closet apart, we saved all the studs. We took all the nails out, they're all pretty straight, we can reuse them again and between that and a few I have hanging out with the ambulance thing, we can make a wall. Cheap rock's very cheap, so we're sure what they give it.
And I think if you ask some of our local plumbers like Sean Hills Grove or.
We have, we have you for quotes.
They'll, they'll, might give you a discount.
Yeah, yeah, we asked Sean and we asked Epsom and Nick Grove.
I think once it sees out straightening out nails on that hand, we can reuse the nails.
I mean, cause you know, some of the electricians do a lot of work for us, so I can only, if, if, you know, if you say we're looking for a good discount and you know, say, oh, we really need a discount, they'll give you a discount.
Yeah, and we only need one plug move and one leg, which is all we need.
Got your phone, yeah.
But we can run the wires and just connect it. So we made this run the wires where they're supposed to go into the boxes and all they had to do was come in and do the finish.
There you go.
Yeah, so, um, training program, we're gonna try to be a little more productive for all the personnel with what's going on now, aside from the groups together. We did, we, uh, two Saturdays ago, we had two cars brought in and two of the new members haven't used the, the rescue tools. The, uh, you know, the spreaders, the drawers of life, as everybody knows what they are. So, um, a couple of our members, Ben was working that day and Dan Conger was working the night before and they stayed over. And they worked the two newest firefighters and they spent almost four hours out there and they basically tore the cars apart. And that was a great experience, but we have to keep the groups really small. So but until that happens, you know, our training program is ongoing every day. Every day we're training, we're learning something new. Every call we go on, every time we come into a different situation, we learn something new, so it's up to go. Um, I also talked to Karen about the pay matrix for both the full timers and call people. We have to figure out something in the near future. You know, we have a new firefighter we just hired at nineteen something an hour and we have Ben Eric here, who's been here for ten years. He's making sixty cents more an hour. And I, he's a valuable resource in this town, not only with his knowledge, but he's also a convoy. His family's here, his kids are here. We have to take care of those guys. We really do. So that's something we all people work on within the next year, two years. It's not gonna, it's not gonna come overnight, but we need to really seriously look at that. And also we need to really work on the number of people we get. Our call list is really exhausting itself. Okay, there's a lot of reasons why, but we don't have a lot of people to come back on the calls. So we need to kind of think of a way to get people to come back. I'll be honest with you, right now, the person that's acting, if I'm wrong, chief Tommy, I think you get like ten dollars an hour. Who's gonna get up at two o'clock in the morning to go off to a call for ten dollars an hour? It's not worth it. It's really, really not worth it.
What, what, what do, um, similar towns pay on call people?
It varies. It's complicated in terms of, it's a piece of trouble. It's not as easy. We're on board here. Very good.
When they, when those on-call people, when they do on-call, is, is there a reason why they just do on-call? Is it because?
They all have another job. Yeah, they're full-time jobs. They're full-time jobs. That's one of the things, this is a.
I didn't know if they were working on such a.
Nationwide problem that we as a society have to address, not just the, and not, not to stop just for a second, but, um, call people. Um, you know, you, and I've talked about this before, um, they, they're coming out from their homes, they're leaving something behind. It's one reason to go on-call and that's it's the best choice, it's the best thing to do for your community. If you wanna not go on-call, I'm a little tired this week. I haven't felt the greatest. My spouse expects something else, my family expects something else, my windshield is not scraped off. Do you know how much hassle this, if you don't have a garage? Some of you do. And if you have to rush out there and find quarter inch ice and snow built up on your windshield, you can't go anywhere for half the call, why bother? Um, two, I have a full-time job that, that treats me very well and I come up for ten dollars an hour and twist a knee. I don't have the protection that I should have for my full-time pay. I mean, yeah, you know, you get where it was come, but there's some other risk there that, that, you know, if I'm not at my job, my boss isn't very happy. If it moves there at five o'clock, there's no protection. So there's a lot of reasons to reset the page and not come out. And some of it's bad feelings, some, you know, if somebody gets their feelings hurt, they're gone and I won't lie to you, there's some of the.
Oh, I mean, I was.
The crisis, you're wrong.
I remember last year, we lost, when you were complaining that the, um, calls were not coming in. You indicated there was a reason for that. Have you approached any of them before without saying anymore? Have you approached any more of them and asked them to come back?
I have, um, they're not going to.
Okay.
And, and, you know, one, one is strictly paid. Um, he, he went from, from a, a full-time position to a call position, nine dollars less than obviously, I can't afford daycare, not even gonna bother. Not gonna do that, so, um, and some of the other situation is, we've lost close to three months here. Um, I have a handful of people that I wanna bring forward that are, are great prospects. We can't get a background check down on them and we can't get a, a fiscal down on them. So we're kinda dragging feet. Now, I've been in contact with them and saying, you know, you gotta be with me here, you know, we're, we're really interested in it. By the way, the building's flaws. You know, we're, we're really interested in, by the way, they're building claws. So if I thought we could bring them on, and if we may do this, and then we'll talk about this. And in the future, saying, okay, we're not gonna get their background checked and all that stuff down, but can we get them in to help start spending some time learning and training and finding, maybe we can do something when they release some of our restrictions?
So you do have a group that will, to offer the ten dollars.
I think I have four of them, well, and they're actually lovely, they're, for, for the sake of anything. You don't have the type of people that are gonna be, and they may not know you. How they know you, obviously, we're great for it. A year from now, we're, we're, this wasn't my.
So roughly, how many regular call members do you have?
Well, I will tell you who's gonna qualify for your stimulus program. You have six full-time, he qualifies for this full-time, so you got those seven. There are three others that will probably qualify, three.
And the on-call.
And out of those three, they will qualify every week.
Right.
Think about that.
They what?
You, you have to go, to, to get the stimulus money that is being offered, you have to go on a call this week. If they don't make a call this week, they don't qualify.
Right.
In that whole eight-week period, I've only got three people that are gonna, that have qualified so far this year, three! We're not a lot worse off than a lot of our communities, 'cause I'm not gonna lie to you. I have fire chiefs from four states in my office on a regular basis. We talk about the same things through and through. As a society, we've gotta try to improve this, this isn't just a vaccine problem. But every little thing we can do with the matrix.
The on-call people, they, do they get an on-call pay, or are they just?
No, only, only when they show up for a call, they get an hourly rate. So if they come in for an ambulance call and they don't go to the hospital, they just help stabilize, carry equipment in and then car goes out, brew their forty minutes, they get a one-hour minute. If they go to the hospital and they're, they're two and a half hours, then they get two and a half hours pay. But they, they get that one-hour minimum just for coming out, two and a half hours, and then a fire call, a med call, anything like that, so.
So you just said you have five to six call members right now, and you only utilize three so far.
Those, those are the ones that are showing up, that are showing up now.
It's not, we don't utilize them, they come on in their own discretion.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so we don't just, we'd like to utilize everyone.
Yes.
And if, yeah, if I could break out, really, with what's going on, we'd like to limit the exposure.
Okay.
Really like to limit, I mean, fire calls, come on down. But the exposure, even on exposures, I'll monitor the call, an ambulance call, an EMS call. Because why, why have anybody else exposed if we don't have?
So on a normal basis, what's your ideal amount of call members?
I would like to have personally, I might kind of dozen. And I might have eight per diem. Per diem of people that I might call a phone amp to come in for twenty-four hours.
Do you have any per diems now?
No, no. I didn't cover all the baking shifts.
They've all left.
So the agreement I had with the chief, when he asked me back in July, is that, you know, they have three vacancies, would you cover? I said, yeah, I would. So, um, there's been a couple shifts that I've worked and actually covered, you know, as a firefighter position. So there's nobody wanting to take the overtime, nobody wanting to work. And my philosophy is that I don't wanna leave, by and said, it's more a firefighter. It's not the other.
So I think, Alan, you've done a great job with our.
I know you've done, I think you're coordinating with.
I, I, I know, I was, with Archie.
Yes.
And, um, and, uh, and, you know, 'cause we're in a, we're in a tough place, because he can't be hit full-time, that's the reason. He can't be hit full-time. So both of you have worked really, really hard to, I've seen it, you know, this is a great improvement. Um, so thanks to both of you very much for, um, doing, I, I'm really impressed. I'm really impressed by this work, so.
One of the things I'd like to say is, if any of you guys have any questions, feel free to call. If you see my wife truck out front, feel free to come over. I mean, right now, the firehouse is kind of closed off. And I, no matter who you are, we're not really allowing anybody in the firehouse. Matter of fact, we have a procedure, when you do walk in the firehouse, you walk in the front lobby, which is all painted off, so it's like you're right now.
Why don't I go see it?
And we do a rapid checking temperature before you go in the firehouse, and you answer the cord. So every day when somebody comes into work, and we're telling the guys, come in in regular plain clothes, not their uniforms anymore. Some of the guys still bring their uniform, but we like when you, your uniforms have to work. So you're not bringing it home to your families. We have washers and dryers here, so the guys can wash their uniforms. And in the off-going shift, the ongoing shift, you throw in the dryer for the guy, and hold it out and put in some water. So when you come into work, the first thing is, you walk in the front door, you take your own temperature. And then you record it, and if you're feeling well, that's one of the precautions we're doing. And then every morning, we wipe down, we have a little wipe, floor wipe, all the handles, uh, bathrooms, the desks, the phones, the mouses. Everything get wiped, gets wiped down. And every time, you know, we go on a call or anything, everybody's washing up. So we're going for a water bath to start right now.
Thanks, man.
So we're trying to keep the firehouse as clean as possible, like, you know, like anything else. So those are the precautions we're taking.
That's awesome.
Okay?
Great.
This year, whether the person made five calls or one call or one, part time. Like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Three of those people made one call this year so far. So these six have made more than one call. At seven hundred calls a year. Figure how long they can be up there, so. And, oh, let's stop for a second, the police department's been a huge asset to us by helping carry and cause out and whatnot, and they don't go on our calls anymore. So it's two, you know, so it's, it's, these guys have been, they don't call for help unless they absolutely have to have it. Because they're not the responsible for his house, they're responsible for his family also. And these guys have done a hell of a job protecting their people's families, they really have, we've been really, really.
Well, thank you for all your hard work, we appreciate it.
They've done a good job, and I thank them, you guys.
Thank you. Very happy to see this. So.
When, when this whole thing's over, we'd love to have each one of you come separately, if you'd like.
Yes.
And come look at the firehouse. And if you have any questions about anything, about how things, you know, operational, why we do this, why, you know, what's this for, what's this for? Ask us, we'll, we'll tell you exactly. You know, why, why is this truck here, is this truck here, why do you have that truck there? We'll explain to you why, you know, how things are done, so, and it's the best way.
So the, the, I think all of this is great, I love how you encourage the pride and, um, the sense of responsibility and painting and making it their firehouse. I'm just, I just think that's wonderful. So the only thing I'd, I'd like to just see is, so it doesn't fall by the wayside, I think, ensure that pay matrix gets done and, and evaluations and reviews get set up. Just because that's the thing that this whole town has lacked for a long time. And, uh, we need to keep encouraging the pride and the sense of responsibility. And I think the evaluations and the pay matrix pay is part of that.
The chief did do them for a year and a half.
Yeah.
So we're gonna, when I get around, we have seven kids get here. And we'll do the evaluations, the pay matrix is something that we all need to get together here and work together. And I actually have five comparisons right now of five towns, very similar to what our town is like. We're not gonna, it's not gonna be perfect, and what their pay matrix is. So I'm gonna actually present that to Karen, give her the whole, um, folder, and you guys can kind of decide.
That's wonderful, thank you so much.
And I'll be honest with you, I asked the guys to do it for me, I delegated to the guys.
That's good.
And they asked each other, what towns you cover, what little, I wanna pay you. So which country, Whitefield, I wanna pay you for you. And then one guy said, I know another town close by us, about the same population, and they run twenty-four hours, they do an S and fire. Okay, call them up, you know the chief, call them up. So everybody is a resource, and we just use them and beat them to the ground with them, so.
And I think this board made the commitment that the pay matrix is something that we're gonna be.
This year.
This year.
Yeah.
This year.
Yeah, it's a priority, so, yeah. We all wanna try to make some differences in our town for the good.
Thank you very much.
Looking towards the future, you know, we need to get our, get our crap together.
Well, the thing, some respect for you guys, coming here, first thing is, we know where we're at right now, we know what's going on. We're not trying to spend this, we need this, we're not trying to do that. I think, I totally respect what you've been doing there.
Well, I'm gonna get to that now.
Yeah.
He always says that first, and then hits us with what he wants.
This is only for the. I need a gallon of worm.
Okay.
Just, just a couple things, and the last one we'll probably have to do at some point in the public, but, um, two things. I had a warrant out go in this past year for, um, and funded for, um, rescue tools for around thirty-one thousand dollars. And I didn't know that it got taken out, unfortunately, until sixty-four town meeting, when I went to the town board. So the only thing I'd like to say is, if there's, if there's something that we're talking, and, and we were already talking about that warrant out two weeks before that, and didn't know that it got taken out.
I'm not worried about it, why was that there?
No, let me clarify. It went in, but the capital reserve that it's coming out of, the, uh, town meeting voted to make the selectmen agent to expend, so it doesn't need a warrant out.
Oh.
All that is needed, and I was quite sure I explained that to you, Mr. Mulcahy.
I'm sorry.
Um, so we, we removed it, and they just have to come before the board and say, can I expend it? And as trustee of the trust fund, if you approve, they go forward.
Can I apologize, I missed that?
Oh, that works.
My point here is not, not to say.
Shame on Sean.
No, I'm not, I'm not, it, it happened, and, and there's reasons why we take things out. We, it, it, to fund other things in order and all that. My point to you major, my phone's on twenty-four hours a day. If you need me, let me know if something happens. I'm sure Karen told me. Go, you know, I'm like, yeah, 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 I heard something, and I apologize, I didn't catch that, so that's good news. Um, and.
I remember.
I don't either, so, so. My only point was, um, and this is because it's the first time I've been here since town meeting. Um, we haven't been able to, uh, my phone's on all the time. And Karen and I talked, we're, we're very good, and I'm sure I just missed it, but if there's a decision that needs to be made, even if you think I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna like it, just let it out, don't worry about it. I don't take it personal, I really don't. We have a, you guys have a community to run. I, I'm just a small pile of that, and we'll figure it out. Other than something else, just for consideration in the future. We used to have a pickup truck. It's still sitting in the station, it won't pass inspection. And I know we had a ton of, a number of vehicles. We don't have a pickup truck to pick up hauls or to move anything that we need to do. Uh, we're trying to borrow all the time. That vehicle needs some pretty extensive, uh, repairs, it's been, it was up to be voiced for sticker, it needs, um, quite a lot of work. It's got some rust on the rocker panels and catapults and whatnot, it's nineteen eighty-five. If we have no intentions of ever, ever replacing that, um, I'd like to talk about getting that fixed up enough so we can use it. And I don't need an.
It's a nineteen eighty-five?
Yes.
Can't you get another twenty years out of that?
I could. My, my problem is, the days of us doing refer to the fire station and painting vehicles and welding there, they're pretty much over. We just don't have the people for it. So you guys send it out, have a body right now, you know, that's, this, this.
Is this just a regular pickup truck?
It's, it's a, actually, it's a military, it's a military surplus vehicle that we bought that was incredibly good condition when we bought it many years ago. We got it right, we got it from Federal Circles in Concord. Um, it served us really well. Um, but I really have heart, and when I start looking and saying, well, it needs this, 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 and this, and we're looking at four grand investment, so that basically scenario may be probably more unmaximing fat truck.
Did you, uh, plan to buy another one?
I can't, but it's been, it's been eliminated in the budget process, and it was, um, you know, you just don't need it, you just don't need it. Well, um, I think we do, and I, and I wanna talk about, um, if we, obviously, we've waited a long time. If there's a possibility of buying something used in the future, next, even after town meeting next year, we'll talk about that, and I won't spend any money on this one. If we're never done, I'd like to fix this one, 'cause I really need something.
So there's no funds in the fund for this, are being saved or?
No, no, there isn't, no. We need not to buy something, I've got maintenance ones I can use. The Kowalone we saved, there's no way to put oil holes in that truck. That's a main vehicle, the new Kowalone, it's got radio, all threats and the, everything. Yeah, i- if I had to put anything in, that's sort of maxi, and that's just not appropriate, there are holes, things like that, um, you know.
So you need a pickup truck, something you can throw them.
We should have a utility truck that we can, you know, um, we, we actually go, we, we treat the dead body here not too long ago, and, um.
You threw it in the pickup truck?
No, we go out and go, they'll hit you up in, 'cause that's all we have. It's a whole fit in this truck, so we're gonna have to do that, so we didn't have it yet. Matter of fact, it's a.
Do we, do we have any vehicles in town that we're not using for a pickup truck?
No.
No?
So it's something to just be aware of. Yeah, if, if, if we're not, if we're not.
I think he wanted a, a new one, and he didn't need your old one, I think that was what I heard.
Yeah. I, I, I don't need, I, I, I don't, I don't think we need to buy it if we, if we move forward next year and replace it. Buy something used, I don't need something, though, I really don't, I'm fine with that.
The other, the other option, I should park your body for, maybe take your Kowalone, maybe that, maybe that's a pickup truck, and get a new Kowalone.
That was the plan, if you look back in the capital expenditure plan, in the CRP plan. Um, if you had a full-time fire chief from when Mac was here, the mileage would have been at ninety thousand miles by now. The plan was to take that Kowalone, make a utility truck, ditch the nineteen eighty-five, and put fire chief in a new Kowalone. But we did have a mileage on that, and we considered, and we still consider it, but, um, so you need to, you know.
And all the new chief cars are a lot smaller.
Yeah.
That's the one with the cap on the back.
Yeah, yeah. If you open the tailgate, there's, there's a radio console that slides out.
Yeah.
It's got all the map books and all of that.
Have you tried to ask Kowal?
Both of us, that's why it's down here stationed now, so we keep, because we're not, we're not working. I use the power, and then I leave the power heater, and then on weekends, I rent from Sean's car, I drive out and do that, but. I use my own.
Would you use that to put hoses in and stuff?
No, because it's got, it's got radios on it, that's command.
Oh, that's funny.
That's the only command unit.
I think it's, you know, if they had to do.
Command.
Yeah, some of the new command vehicles are, I know, when I came from Manchester, we had just bought new ones, and they're actually Ford one-fifties. They're a smaller pickup truck, and, uh, they work out great, they're great in the snow, and we do, I don't know, twenty, thirty thousand miles a year on our cars. And they work out great. I mean, that, that truck is nice, I'm just not a big dog's fan.
Well, you're better than that. The reason why that's a three-quarter ton is because it was gonna be the utility truck, so it can pull the trailers.
When is that pickup truck up for registration, for inspection?
It's passed, it failed.
So you're not using it?
No, it's parked in the station we put our, uh.
In a town, 'cause there's holes in the rust and all.
Yeah, and there's exhaust manholes.
Can you just take them off?
No, we're all.
Maybe you should come down.
There's two people, there's, there's two people sitting here saying, no, the fire chief is no, and I, I do say.
You should ask Jerry on the street to, you know, Mickey Mouse it.
Well, one of these Mickey Mouse and some things, like, we need to buy some.
I'm just kidding.
I'm finding that it's gonna be safe for the world.
So you're thinking that just to.
It had a fire in it.
Lasted paint itself, it's not gonna be working, 'cause, I mean, what's the engine, does the engine even work?
It's, I mean, fire diesel, it's a normal truck, okay? You know, it did alright for what it was meant for, and if I had to use it again, I would.
Yeah, I think you're smart to say that, I don't see how anybody can disagree. You need to find that enough.
Yeah, I could.
Five minutes too long.
I should have put, put the money back into that, so.
If I do say, we're gonna try to move forward at some point, probably not till next year, then we can strip that thing and send it to the state on our truck.
So maybe you could put some.
Oh, you haven't said, metal bar, I know metal. Probably a bar, a jigger pole, or anybody wants it.
So maybe you could fit it in for the next year, and get some of that put together.
We're talking about that. And at some point, maybe in non-public, you may wanna talk about fire chief's position.
Yeah, we, we, we're just gonna bring that up, but we have to go with, uh, well, first of all, we, we just.
Yeah, 'cause we talked about, we said it's something that probably would be more for the next year, because at this point, for this year, it's not.
The fire.
So I think we're really pleased with what we're hearing, right? I would say. Everybody's very pleased with what we're hearing. And I know that we wanted a fire, a full-time fire chief, but we were gonna revisit that based on what you were gonna tell us today. And everything seems very good. How are you feeling, Sean, about still getting a full-time chief for next year? Or do you wanna still stay on as part-time? Where are you at?
Let's, let's run out of sun and see where it goes. Let me tell you where my decision comes from, is how long my health holds up. Now, I've made some major prescription changes in the last two weeks. Some have been approved by my doctors and some have not been approved by my doctors. But I'm feeling a lot better and as long as my health holds up, I'll go in there and hand this to you. I'm just, I, as you all know, I'm struggling. I've got excruciating pain from Europe acid going on head and toe. And it's, it's, boy, seventy-nine, ten on CL one of that.
Do you think, we have someone, well, we have a person interested in a full-time chief and we just don't know if he'll wait until next year. So we didn't, I, I, I guess should be going on public to have this discussion or is it?
I don't think we need to have a discussion.
We're not really, we're not really, we don't, we just needed to know where, what your thoughts were because we're very pleased. I'm not sure if we need a full-time chief right now, but, I don't know. What do you guys think?
We'll, we'll, we'll look at it as best we can except never on hold.
Okay, I see how you're doing. That sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like you guys are going to rate your.
Well, we're, we're trying.
Guys I've met from over there, seen them on a couple of scenes. Phenomenal. You got good guys that work there. I know you know that. They're really good. They're not just skilled at what they do. They're compassionate and, you know, they got the focus.
Can you let that person, that candidate know?
That we'll revisit in the fall. Absolutely.
How's the physical? You're gonna start through training for the.
Yeah, what do you do on there?
I, I will tell you, the personnel we have over there are, they love their job and they're very good at their job. I mean, I dealt with, you know, my thirty-seven years in Manchester, I dealt with a lot of firefighters. And those guys, they're very proficient in their skills. I'll tell you that. I walk more than a lot of guys I've worked. And they care.
Be careful, you're on live TV.
That's right.
You just have to go back to face it.
I know, that's true, that's true.
I can tell you, this guy's from the HES and nobody's watching him.
He's gonna be driving through the city and be planning hours for it.
They're very proficient in their job, you know, their job. And that's one thing that I can tell you. I was very impressed when I came here. First time I've known Sean for thirty-five years, thirty-two years. And I was very impressed with the apparatus. I'll tell you, I'm very impressed. I mean, the condition of the apparatus, the knowledge these gentlemen have and the love, they love their apparatus like an old BMT car. They really do. And they know their job. And I was often, and all fooled. I know you don't have a CDL license, but all fooled. And they know their apparatus and everything else.
How are the ones with the, about the CDOs, are they?
Well, working on it.
Who else is over the week?
Yeah. I'm, they're really gonna start, I talked to Karen last week and I'm really gonna start, but we're filming right now. Because, you know, I've been a nice, a nice guy, you know. We have one gentleman that has taken his RIT test, it's passed. And I told him, I said, I want the driver test done. And the other gentleman is gonna be putting off the RIT test and he said, it's time to do it. That's it. You know, I mean, you're a firefighter, you're hired to have a CDL license, let's get the job done. And I think moving forward, we should either look at, like, either they get their CDL with a minimum time limit. Like, you know, within sixty days if you don't have it, or you don't have a job. Or you come on with a CDL license here, we're not just one of them.
Excellent.
I would suggest that, if you're interested. Then we wouldn't run it in this call. But with everything going on, you know, it's tough with scheduling. The DMG will schedule it. I'll make sure it happens. Because I'm gonna drive down with them, so. And I'm gonna make sure they get their CDL.
You're gonna take your ambulance out?
And the other thing I wanted to bring up is the money for the rescue tools. If you don't really know, rescue tools are basically tools for, if you're in a traffic accident or a bomb accident, anything, we use hydraulic tools. So jaws of life, as we all knew from years ago. Our tools are, how old are these?
The newest one's about sixteen years old.
Sixteen years old. They're hermato tools. That's the naked, naked tools. They're an old no system. What we're looking for is, everything's battery operated now. And what we're looking for, I think, you know, in a hundred more, I'm not sure.
You're right.
Okay. Battery operated tools, maybe one on the ambulance, maybe one on the engine, or whatever the chief wants. I, when I left Manchester, two of the dealers who actually worked for me in Manchester, the dealers, Amptis Tools and Hurst Tools. Those are two other brands. They're all competitive. And matter of fact, one of the gentlemen was up at my place this weekend and said, I'll come down, I'll do a demonstration. Something you guys are all about on the seat is you're, I mean, you're giving us the okay. And battery operated tools are as efficient as a hydraulic tool is now. So it's a good investment. It's where everybody's going and we are behind the times. We don't use them a lot, but the problem is, when you need them, they have to work. You're stuck under a tractor and our, you know, our tool is not good for the tractor. You're gonna come back and say, wow, you know, I wish I would have had my leg back.
Now, what are we talking, dollars and cents? Thirty, thirty.
Thirty-one thousand.
Yeah.
I remember now the conversation of that, when you were talking to us about all the equipment and how old it was and that you really need to do.
They don't make vehicles like they did.
But the best thing to do is, they, if you do plan a demonstration, is have you guys come down. And just watch and see what the tools do. And then, you know, we can show you exactly what we can get, the product we wanna buy. Have you invested, you know, our ideas too.
And so, there's probably maybe some limited manufacturers, so I'm just thinking for the bid process or purchasing policy, you'll get a few proposals.
We could get easily.
Can you get three? Okay.
We have a whole lot of tools. I'll update that. He's got Amptis and Hurst.
Good, okay.
And we've, many of us, I handle all tools. I don't think that a fire truck doesn't come in my shop and I open the door and say, what, what are you doing? Wow, big.
This is money they got.
Yeah, I do love that much, I mean.
It's money we have in the capital reserve, however, to spend it. Like I say, you, you just have to approve it, so they'll bring in some proposals. They'll tell you with their expertise probably what's the best piece of equipment or best for the town. And then you can just vote. And it's in capital reserve, so all I have to do is just.
So it's not budgeted money, it's in capital.
It's not anything in the budget. It's in capital reserve.
So, Ari, go ahead and get your votes.
We'll let you know when we do have, it's probably be this summer sometime, this whole COVID thing. And like all you guys, come look at, you know, the tools that we're all doing together. And actually, if you put some air around something, maybe, maybe you could change the.
How could that be?
Yeah, I would also like always.
Hey, I'm gonna try to, one of those big huge John Chiesi's duck before.
Yeah, thank you very much. I will say, I always thank the taxpayers. It's not easy for them to use in their wallets and pull out tax dollars and support us. And I have thanked them for decades for what they've done for us here. And the chief will tell you, if you're under pressure, I'm reporting it. One of those is, this community supports us very well. We make smart purchases, but more importantly, if you go all the way back to when we were privately owned, we owned that. We, we had, you know, we all went to our employers and begged, borrowed and stole anything that could help support our individual organizations. And now that our thought process is still carried on today, but hey, that's ours. We gotta take care of it. I don't think it's a major, a fire truck or chair or building. We, we protect them. We take care of them.
And there's a reason why we have such good equipment. We have a best guy out there, while we're in, and, you know, this stuff lasts a decade. It's a charity that really does.
Well, we know it's a nineteen eighty-five vintage truck.
Yeah, they just sell it as an eighteen or about fifteen grand.
Five, oh, that's nineteen. That we have here.
Oh, wow.
Many years ago.
So, do you guys have any more questions for these guys? I just, I had one, but does anyone have any? No?
Who's mad? Who's, do you have any questions for me?
Nope. I'm looking forward to coming over there.
Yeah, definitely.
Anytime. You, you, you guys can go. I mean, obviously, we know a lot of our visitors, but.
Stick to your procedure. It'll work.
Yeah, yeah. One of the other things we give you to do is also fire inspections. When you ask for a fire permit, we actually, if you haven't had a permit prior to the last year or so, we actually send somebody out. We either send the fire truck out or send, Gary, you set out and we'll do inspections down. Now, everything is also on the, the Manchester State website now. So I can go in, I can query your name and I can see how many fire permits you have and everything's on that. The old days of handling stuff, I'm trying to get away from now. Everything's re-documented, everything. And I can actually look into the town onset and see whose fire permits are valid today. Because it's a one-day permit for.
Yes, they do that.
Oh, I want to add efficiency. What if I put this? What? Go on, go on there.
Yeah, it's a private, we're very happy about that.
It was just a service of online products for this state. It was the worst decision that I've absolutely ever made in the world. Because what he's talking about is inspections and some people might be thinking, ah, I'm in the townsend, the government's in my business and all that. It's an educational process. All of this is here. Did, did, did you think about that hanging over the top of the fire pit? Oh, wow, people, do this and look at my safety list. It's an education process, is all of this. We're not out there to stop people from doing anything other than doing it safely.
Yeah.
And it works.
Yeah.
It works.
So I have, I haven't inquired, and I, and I just wanted to ask you about.
If it's a complaint, I'm gonna take it down.
No, it's not a complaint.
Right.
You know the parade fire station?
Yeah.
So the Pittsfield Senior Center would like to transfer it to Barnstead. So we, so the people that are working on that asked me about, you know, if I knew of any options and they were thinking of the parade fire station to have a senior center. And I said, I'm not sure because I think they use that very frequently. So I don't think it would be a good fit, but I just wanted to ask you.
Well, and, and we, we, we allow meetings there.
Yeah, but this would be money from Friday night to two.
No.
And they'd be cooking meals in there.
Well, it couldn't happen. I would love to have, for home, anybody that cooks. But what you need to understand is, there's no place in this building that would be, at all. So that's our only training mode.
Yeah.
Although, if they look at me right now, we're doing.
It's a right, I called in two minutes and he might invest in, in the building for us, but.
What about on the top of that building?
No, go ahead.
What do you, what do you ask for keeping there? Just a couple, few trucks?
Oh, no, no. Look, you can come and visit us. We have backup ambulance, our second ambulance, second engine, our old tanker, the three thousand gallon tanker that's two thousand and twelve, Forest Street, which is a two thousand and sixteen with a Kubota behind it, Big Boat, and utilities in there right now. So, I would love to have one, but don't get me wrong. But could we get rid of half of what we have, that mold, half what we have? No. We have to have two ambulances and we have to have two pumpers. And I'll tell you, that process is, this town used to have four pumpers when we had separate stations and we've cut that down to two total. So if you only have two, if you only have two pumpers and one goes down for, needs to go to the ground for state inspection, needs to go get tested, needs to go get tires drawn. You lost fifty percent of your fire truck capability earlier. The only tanker we have in this town is in that building. It won't fit in this building. So what we keep in this building, and, and this is a, a tough call, and I defend this all the time. Initial response, initial emergency response. First ambulance out, first engine out to attack a house fire. The tower, because placement of the tower is absolutely critical. If it's late into a call, it can't get to the call. And it has to be in the front lawn.
Does everybody understand what we're talking about, getting that?
Yeah, I mean, it's what you get there first and then you play the national.
It's a heavy rescue. The heavy rescue has all of the support equipment on it and you need to look at that truck. It's got the initial response, both the roll up, boat and mold up. It's got all of having that equipment. It's got all of every auto action, kitchen tool we own, airbags, ice rescue sled, ice rescue souls, throw rolls. The list is immense of what's on that truck. So the heavy rescue, the staff, regulars walking downstairs, they've got heavy rescue, the tower, one engine, one ambulance. The backup engine, the backup ambulance, the old tanker we have, the only forest we have, over there. Now, the building's pretty full. I have, we've talked every, every year since I've been here about having one building. You can't. You just, boy, you can't get rid of the forest and the tanker. You would have, you would have nearly enough.
It's almost like the highway drive, it's not having that. A loader, a grader and an excavator. Each one does a specialized job. You know, so it's just like fighting out.
No, I think it's fire and specialized truck. The tanker's pretty busy. The second engine is, is only busy when we need backup engine. The Forest Street, quite frankly, take a year. Two thousand seventeen, we had the tires off that truck. Two thousand eighteen, it ran every single weekend. Truck never took a call. You know, but, and then this year, I'm sure it's been out already and I'm sure it belongs to more. So you, you never know about the Forest Street. We did, we do, we did use it for the, when we went for that cardiac rescue, that would be a body recovery. That's what pulls that motor. So that Joe's connected to that foresting all the time. So if we have an off-road rescue, snowmobile accident, anytime a rescue, or a burst fire, we got that package to go. So it could be something, maybe something smaller, you can do everything you need to do. What we're going to tow over there, it's the only admin office we have. We've talked about, well, can we move the admin office over to this building? I want you to sit in this building, really quiet next door and think, could I have a meeting, a personality meeting in that building? With anyone in that building could hear us open up some cars?
Yeah.
Need an admin office.
I just needed to ask because I just.
And I'm good with that. I consider it all.
I knew it wasn't proper.
And we, we, we.
But I had to do my job and ask.
So listen, Boy Scouts began in this town in the fifties. The fire department sponsored those groups. We've been, they have a child. And we allow those groups to use the meeting as much as we can. And right now, it's emergency mannequins, maybe a building.
Hey, you just gave me an idea because I know that the Boy Scouts, you know, Legion now. I wonder if the Legion, they have a picture, don't they?
Oh, yes, they do.
I wonder if the Legion would get one?
Did you know that building was gonna be a fire station on point?
No.
I have to be to that building from eighteen ninety-eight.
You do? Wow.
The railroad, it took a bunch of people.
Ooh, I think I might have asked this earlier on.
No. There was a Legion building. I have the title for it. I thought it was, I thought it would be. That building was donated to, a group of guys that were gonna stop, not for a great fire, but in eighteen ninety-eight and they never got off the ground. And it didn't happen until nineteen oh nine. And by that point, they had no plans.
So.
History was.
That's a small building. Something different. Laurie, so it's the senior citizen for Pittsfield?
The senior center in Pittsfield wants to give it to Barnstead.
Okay.
So they called me and asked me if I had a building that they could go to. And they asked me about Talapah.
Right.
Hooray. And Mr. Dudek.
Because I'm just, I'm thinking Barnstead used to have a senior citizen group that met here, but they only did like once a month. But whatever you come up with, hopefully, it can be a combined effort of Barnstead and Pittsfield citizens and become one group maybe.
Yes.
Especially if you're gonna use.
So, they want to, we have a duty here. Nine to two is when it's open and they do, they serve lunch.
Okay. Yeah, I don't.
So, maybe, maybe.
I don't know.
I'm gonna ask. I'll email him. And he wants it here. No, it'd be nice to have a senior center in town, don't you think? And we're also looking for a family pizza center, which, the Long Lake is thinking about letting them use Patriot Pizza. But if we could get Legion, that would be nice. But we need office space too.
Yeah, so maybe Dudek might be a really, a really good second.
Yeah.
Place to.